Before we get into our agenda, typically, is anyone here from the public that wishes to be heard on a matter that's not on the agenda? All right, we're gonna move first to police chiefs here to introduce a new officer, is that correct?
Yes, sir. David, um, we've got our newest officer here, Matt Weber, he came to us from Auburn PD, certified. He's had about three years on. He already lives in a town in Northwood.
But you can get here three years on somewhere else?
Yeah, he was in Auburn PD. Yep, and we were able to get him certified, so now he's in his field training. We have about, oh yeah, like week two now.
Week two, yep.
So we've got about four more weeks of field training, hopefully getting wrapped up by the end of February the latest. About the same time, Officer LeBlanc will be done with Canine Schools, and he'll be back. And then, if everything times right, we'll have Peterson will be done with his field training, so should all be around the same time. At least now we'll have full staff for a couple of months until Officer Goode goes off to Cooley.
Oh, that's right, too, yeah. I think this is the first time in five years, we've been so close.
I know, we're right there. On paper, we'll be there.
Not from the box, it's like what, book and the vote. I think you're gonna find this is an awesome place to work and to coexist in. An awesome community that's super involved. This is a select board meeting with all these folks here.
I get with it.
And so I think you'll love it if you hear anything from this team, just let us know.
I give her.
Yeah, reach out to us anytime, but we're happy to have you.
I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in and introducing yourself.
Good luck moving, Matt.
Thank you.
All right, take care.
Perfect, all right.
Thanks, Ken.
Marshall, I'd like to take a few items out of order. We have some donations you can donate, folks that are here to potentially, you have to talk about them, I'd like to get hold of you, Ken.
Yeah, I'm hoping you agree with that.
I'll make a motion that we accept the donation of about $2,500 from Detsy Mahoney and Marty Dowe for the purchase of the new CPR mannequin. In memory of their sister, Mary Shaw.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Tony, would you send a letter from the board?
Thank you, Tony.
I'd like to, uh, I'd like to re-replace as requiring under the certification our SCBA equipment recently for the fire department. I always want to call that school, but I guess it's not underwater, it's above water breathing apparatus.
Self-contained breathing apparatus.
And, uh, our fire chief came up with the idea of donating the used old equipment, the outdated equipment to the Concord Regional Technical Center. There's a valuable equipment of about $6,000 if it's not certification for us, so I think you make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? If you're in non-all favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed.
And finally, I'd like to accept the donation of about $5,000 to our 56,000, the whole long clear fire department, to purchase a track hit for the town's ATV. Subject to me getting to take a ride on that?
Second. Excluding the ride.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Steve.
Does anybody have a line that's not crossed?
No.
All right, go back to number two, David. Samuel Diamond, Harry.
John, um, Delancey here.
Come right up, have a seat, please introduce yourself. This looks involved, it's not.
Thank you.
Pay this last word.
I'm afraid, I'm very afraid.
Is that time, do you agree?
Well, at least having decided, just to set a background, I think item number one in our packets addresses this issue. Uh, and this is in part for the subdivision, what are we calling it? Um, Alpha White Rock? Yeah, Rock, so. It's part of the Somnail Road Plan.
Pay, pay for it, it's White Rock, is it?
Yeah. Part of that plan approval required the town to appoint the engineer to advise on behalf of the town. And then that engineer did some work and has billed some money, um, that the applicant is concerned about and wanted to bring this to our attention.
Appreciate that, I'm Ari Pollock, I'm an attorney at the Gallagher Firm in Concord, and I am John Langill. John is a, has a principal at Samuel Drive LLC, as well as Cherry Hill Homes Incorporated. John and his partner Chris Brandon have done a number of successful subdivision deals with some bow over the years, if you all familiar with John's work. He's presently completing a nine-lot subdivision that you would know as Hamilton Court. And he's conditionally approved for a 17-lot subdivision, which is known as Somnail Road. We're before you tonight to discuss the peer review charges that have been invoiced by Gail Associates. I don't know if anyone from Gail is in the audience tonight or on Zoom. It's typical for a town to engage peer review to consult on development proposals. It's also typical for the town to create an escrow account to hold applicant funds to cover those expenses as the review unfolds. And in this case, the town decided to use Gail Associates. We don't know how or why they were selected, whether they had a competitive bidding process or some undertaking, but see, the town wanted to use, and we act yes. The Gail entered into a subdivision peer review service agreement with the town in January of 2022, a year ago. The agreement referenced the scope of work for field review of the site, review with respect to the ordinance, subdivision regs, and good engineering practices. And also, they were going to review stormwater analysis and the summary and create a summary report of their findings. The section C1 of the agreement, the agreements that Tab A of your packet, if you wanted to roll along. I'd like to have the documents so I can see things for myself. There were six tasks under scope of work, and then on the second page, there are 22 exclusions for musts to be done. So they actually were doing less than, they were doing less than more. And based on the estimate in section C1 of the agreement, they estimated that on a time and expense basis, their charges would range between $7,700 and $8,800. And so based on the estimate, the town asked John to put forward a check of $8,800 into an escrow account so that the town would be funded to pay the invoices when they came forward. And he did just that. Tab B, you'll see, is a draft report that Gail created dated March 9th. Fifteen pages, 94 review comments, nine additional informational comments, and 11 action items. That was the draft. The revised report is at C, which is actually the report that was provided to the applicant. It's dated March 16th. It went from 15 pages to 12 pages, from 94 comments to 91 comments, and instead of 11 action items, now it has six. And this is the version that was provided to the applicant. We later learned, uh, actually in a letter that Gail had sent to John, that there was a meeting with staff over the draft report. And that staff expressed the view that the report was excessive and beyond the scope of work that was contained in the service agreement. I mean, I take that to mean there are early signs of miscommunication. And even after that meeting, whopping three comments were removed. Move on to Tab D, and you'll see the first invoice that was received relative to this, uh, comment memo. They invoiced $7,962.50 for review services from the end of February to the beginning of April, which bookends those two, the draft and the final report. The, uh, the amount was within the range that was collected for escrow. And frankly, John thought he was, uh, that they were right on the money, everything was good. In response to the March 16th report, John asked his engineers at Keach Nordstrom Associates, again, a well-known engineering group that's done a lot of work in Bow over the years, to submit a revised and adjusted plan set, which they did in May of 2022. Gail reviewed these submissions, they issued a report, this time the report gets at E in your packet, dated June 14th of 2022. It had 12 comments, two informational comments, and eight action items. So that's, so that's a good sign, we're narrowing the number of issues as the review moves from phase one to phase two. The tab down, John got another invoice passed through the town, uh, dated July 18th of 2022, where they invoiced an additional $8,370.90. This was for review services rendered between the end of May and the beginning of July. And if you apply, the remainder of the escrow account, roughly $800, was there after the first bill was paid. This creates an existing current balance of $7,533.40. That's what we are talking about. The town is looking for Samuel Drive to pay this amount so that that money can be used to pay Gail before Samuel Drive subdivision plans are signed as final and reported to the registry, which will create the subdivision. Right now, it's got, is a conditional approval from the planning board. If you move to Tab G, uh, you'll see that John wrote to Gail to express his surprise and disappointment. Those are my words, those are not his. His first letter received a reply indicating, uh, that Gail, uh, and this, the reply letter is at H, was quote, "Not aware of the full extent of the project," end quote, at the time that his estimate was prepared. I'm not sure how many of you stand for that in your own minds. Nor was it aware of the quality of design for the number of subsequent any peer review that would be required, signed by the engineer for Gail. In my experience, two reviews is typical. You've got the initial submission, you've got a comment letter, you've got a response to that submission, and then a comment letter back again that says, things either were or will not resolve, and you pass it to the planning board and they do their job. Why that this engineer wasn't able to foresee, uh, two steps is a mystery to me. The August 31st, this letter at H also referenced a staff meeting held between the draft and the final report where, again, um, it resulted in three fewer comments. And it established, quote, "New responsibilities for future peer reviews." To me, that's code word for, "We're charging you for our learning curve, we didn't do what the town wanted, but we still are gonna build all of our time." And so, maybe this is an acknowledgement that the train went off the rails. And if you need any further evidence of the train off the rails, you can measure up the two invoices that are in the packet at D and F. And you can see that the principal engineer on the project had exactly 34 hours billed on invoice number one and invoice number two. I will submit to you that that is an odd coincidence that the exact same number of hours were needed for two different invoices for the same project when you were moving from comments set number one to comments set number two. It's just hard to believe. So I guess we're left with two potential scenarios. Either, uh, the discrepancy was an error and things were double billed. Or the review agent knew that John and his company would be in a tight spot, that the subdivision plan would not be signed until the bills were paid, and they took advantage of that leverage. I hope, I hope it's not the second, I hope it's the first, but we never got a response to our second letter raising these issues, that said "Aye" in your packet. And so we don't know whether or not it's one or two, and we put them both out there as possible explanations. I did go on to this firm's website today, I could not find the gentleman Scott Force here, maybe he's here today, I don't know. I've never, I've not met him. He's not listed on their webpage as under "Our People." Tried to print that out as best I could for you in the page, couldn't get the photos to print, but the names are there. And then, uh, I printed also for you, uh, Tab K, this firm has seven locations around the, the Eastman Seaboard. Somebody must be watching the map, even if this individual is not there anymore. And so, we sit here tonight, the balance is unpaid, the subdivision sits unsigned. As I said, we think one or two, uh, explanations are at play here. I will share with you, Tab L, there is a statute in New Hampshire that says detailed invoices with reasonable task descriptions for services rendered are, uh, must be made available to an applicant who's paying into escrow for these review services. If we got that level of detail, we might be able to determine for ourselves whether there was some double billing event that occurred. What we got instead was a spreadsheet attached to the one reply that we got, which again was at Tab H, which simply describes each task and bill time entry as, quote, "Peer Review," end quote. And say what was reviewed, doesn't say why it was reviewed and so forth. So we asked the town manager if he would be kind enough to intervene in our problems, and he correctly responded that his authority originates with this board. So here we are, we were asking for your help to engage the town manager in some sit-down with this engineering group, uh, where Mr. Stack, uh, myself, John, uh, and Gail, or whoever they wish to bring along, could try and work out this discrepancy and work out this balance. And then, you know, talking bigger picture, we'd like some assurance that we won't be asked to work with this group again. We don't know if there are other review agents that are familiar with those processes and regulations. We'd like to work with somebody else and we can trust your discretion as to who you're offering to applicants. That's all I've got, but we're happy to answer questions. David, what do you mean in form of vote for us to sit down with these guys? I mean, I look at two invoices, they jumped out at me before we brought it up. Scott Morsier, Morsier?
Yeah.
34 hours, another invoice 34 hours after they already did the substantive review. And then, his exhibit H, the spreadsheet, I mean, there's no detail whatsoever. It says simply, "Peer Review."
Right.
And there's some significant hours there. And I note that they're all rounded up, eight hours, eight hours, eight hours, four, six, two, five, eight. My only personal opinion is there ought to be a sit-down with them, David, and the lease gives some explanation as to what's going on with us. I don't, I thought everybody.
I think that's entirely right, but I don't want to hold this for an issue of the project.
I don't either.
I don't think it's fair, I mean, I'm embarrassed, we're us, we shouldn't be put in a situation where we're trying out a new engineer on you, which is what happened here. Now, you've been working for all of the time I've been here. So, and, um, if there's something that we can do to authorize David to be signing off on these permits while we figure out whether, uh, Samuel Drive LLC or the town is going to bear the cost for our responsibility here, I think we need to figure that out.
I would also encourage that we stop using Gail for the time being.
Yeah.
So, we're using somebody else, it won't be Gail, so if we do it again, we won't be Gail. I'd like to stop that for now.
Yeah, there's a couple of ones, you know, Murray.
Yeah, I'm joking.
Can you just state your name?
My name is John Langill, uh, member of Cherry Hill Homes and president of, uh, member of, uh, Samuel Drive LLC, president of Cherry Hill Homes. Samuel Drive is out in the land of the Samuel Drive, the building of Cherry Hill Homes.
Yep.
Uh, the invoicing, the, uh, breakdown of the hours, that was done upon my request, my first, I haven't seen any billing from him through the whole process. And I said, you know, you're at $16,000, please tell me how you came up with the 16. And I just said, there's something that I do, and there we go. In my response, I told him it was unacceptable, nobody in the town knows that. Secondly, um, you know, I'm looking for some help from the town to mediate this, that's all. And I got, I got, and I got nowhere to go because there's nobody at, uh, Community Development that was here when this happened. You know, we've got to change the staff. So I'm asking for that, but also, you know, we do, we do a lot of work in Bow, and we've got a good reputation, and we, 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 you know, we work with people. And I think the process needs to be renewed by the town. And what I mean is, I think that, uh, the contract that, that, um, that Community Development signed is just too open, too broad, and, uh, on the billing, it allows them to bill out of the. This whole process, uh, Scott Morsier had an open checkbook. He signed a agreement with the town. He had no accountability, he did no billing, he didn't provide reports. He met with the town on the, um, on the reviews. As a matter of fact, um, I think he met with the town a couple of times, and Brian in, uh, Westover, expressed to me at the time that they gave the last bill, that, uh, they met with him, he and Matt Taylor, and told him that this 94 items was way beyond the scope of what they were asking for. So anyway, he, the way this system's set up right now, there's no, there's no accountability, there's no reporting, and the developer paying, showing up, $8,000, $9,000, $10,000, should have notification if this is going to involve this, and an explanation why. This guy almost doubled his bill. And I didn't find, I, I, when Brian called me and said he wanted a check for another 70, I said, I said, wait a second, I don't, you've got 800 bucks on your money, I should, I thought he was double billing me. I hadn't, I, I was, I was on the inside of this process. I used to, I held these, I put all my stuff there, and I, I guess, um, my request to the selectmen would be, you may want to have a return and look at the contract, you may want to look at the process.
John, sorry you're going through this. Cherry Hill does have break-upation, and there's a lot, town. I, I'd be happy to work with Dave, and if any of you four would like to broker in some sort of meeting with Gail as soon as possible, um, but yet not, not prohibit your moving forward with that particular. I don't know if that needs to be in form of motion, David, you tell me if you just need to get together with Gail immediately.
What, if I may, I'm willing to just ask for all the money of the town, let's do that.
Okay. While we work on this?
Please allow.
Okay, all right.
And, that's fine.
Appreciate that, John.
So your motion is to accept the escrow from Mr. Langill, that, and we're gonna, uh, have a scheduled meeting with Gail Associates, and further that the town should not enter into any additional agreements with Gail Associates until this is resolved.
I said that in three different times, yes.
I'm gonna second, I'm gonna second the augmentation of that motion.
Any discussion? Yeah, I didn't hear your last comment.
My last one was about the process. I didn't, I, I, my suggestion.
Yes, I heard all that.
Yeah.
At the very end.
He said, "Escrow the money, Mike." You're gonna like the check that he gave me, that just so that he can get it.
Just to be clear, the reason we would escrow the money is so that the bill could be paid in full if that was the resolution. But we would want the planning department to recognize that the escrow of that money satisfies the condition that we make those payments.
Understood.
We understand.
And if you need to word that a little bit better, Tanya, I'm happy to amend my motion to be encompassing.
That's what I intended for.
Yeah, same here. And I'd also, can we put it on the to-do list now, Dave or Tanya, that we, we do review our process, I'd be happy to put it on there now?
Well, it's started.
You know, okay, all right, so it sounds like it's already in the process, so appreciate the suggestion.
I don't know if you meant Carrie, we have a.
Do they want to involve the developer too in that conversation?
Great suggestion.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, none in passing. So, I'm going to go.
Thanks for the house for doing this.
Thanks for cooperating.
Appreciate that, thanks. Thanks a lot, man.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Number three, David, D. Trebek?
Yes.
Come on up, please. And again, if you can stick your name, I just, for the record, that's great.
D. Trebek, 15 Grant, Lundy Ridge, Kern Pike, East.
And Rob Presley, 15A, Ranch, Lundy Ridge, Kern Pike, East.
Welcome.
We share a road.
Coming up.
And John, real high house.
Oh, he did, he did?
Yes, he did, they built right next to it.
He built a nice house.
He did?
We do have your, uh, proposals. Document, I assume this is your document?
Which, that one there, yes, well, actually, it's some of the group, uh, the Christians.
Yeah, D. Trebek.
Trebek.
Yeah, Trebek.
So go ahead, um, other than the documents we have for you, go ahead and let us know what you're looking for.
So, I'm here tonight with several, uh, of the butters, and a couple of other butters, that just about the cell phone issue because of cellular power issue. You know, first of all, thank you for the service that you guys do, I know it's not fun, I've been there, and a couple, and we have some hard decisions to make. But, uh, hopefully we make those decisions with the best facts and the best consideration, as I just observed previous issue. We all want better cell phone coverage. I was at both meetings where we voted for one to step back and get the butters to have been notified, we reached that, did that well, and then they were notified, and then the town voted, uh, the 600 or so that were there voted for to go forward. No issue with that, we all, we need better cell power to vote. But I'm a planner, and we're going to come on the planning board, and it disturbs me and the people that I'm working with that we don't have a town plan. We feel like, we did do an RFP process, which we normally do, um, at least when I was on the budget committee and the school board, I was on the recycle committee, you know, we had an RFP process. And I don't know what happened there, and I don't want to, uh, point fingers or anything like that. I just feel like we've gone down a road where this company, Rising Tides, seems to be dictating a lot of terms. And we are a wonderful town, and we are a good-sized town, and we have a lot to offer anybody that comes here, and I feel like we need to have other people look into, other companies be considered. And I know that doesn't sway with the fact that it's an application right now, we do address that, but I think we need a town-wide plan. I've learned more than I expected to in the last month or so about cellular towers and their service. And with that education process, discovered that there are other companies definitely willing to come to Bow, that, um, the town idea, which I first learned about from the town of Stafford, uh, Stratford, sorry. And talked to people there, I talked to the planning board there, I talked to, um, two people, uh, people on the committee for the town of Stratford that did the cellular plan. And a little history on that, if you don't know it, is the reason that they did, uh, plan was because they sort of got cornered into a cellular application with Borg-type towers, where a private landowner put a tower, got permission, uh, to put a tower through the application process on his land, and it wasn't an ideal location, in fact, it's back up to Parker Mountain. This is the story they told me on their history. And they ended up running out of time, and they ended up having to approve the application. They didn't want that to happen again. So they created this, the select board created this cellular service town plan for Stratford. So they got together with several people, they had some volunteers, and they put together this whole plan, mapped out, how can we get 100%, at least 95% of coverage in our town? Without, you know, all visual effects of minimum impact, visually upsetting different citizens, et cetera, et cetera. So they went about that, they did that, they got the RFP engineer, and they, they did the whole plan, they presented it, and now they have, a year later, 100% coverage, not 95, 100. And they're bragging online about the fact that they are one of the best neighborhoods because they have 100% coverage in this small town of 2,500 special people. You know, we're much bigger than that, if they can do it, we can do it. And I want to see the whole town covered, because what I talked to, we did a petition for, um, award our people to do this plan, you've probably already heard about that, and that's been submitted. But I want us to come from you, because I just feel like we need to take a step back and consider this other process I mentioned, the moratorium process, to not end up like the town of Stratford in this first tower scenario. And get a good, solid plan for our town, because so many people that we were talking to don't know that the tower was moved from its original location. They don't know how close it is to some of the houses from the original town discussions. They don't know that it's not gonna fix the entire town problem. And as so many people I've talked to have said, "What do you mean, is this gonna fix the problem?" I'm like, "No, it's one area." And these guys can't even guarantee that this is gonna be down in our, fix a high school because of the elevation and everything else. So I feel like if we did a town plan, if we took a step back, did a town plan, which can be done on its goal in 60 to 90 days, not 15 years for now. And you get that done, you get it implemented, it's like Stratford had theirs all done in a year, apparently. And then, not only are we gonna have safety throughout the entire town, but we're gonna have maybe the one that's in my neighborhood, which by the way, I'm not in a butter, and I don't even see the tower, and I'm all baby naked. That might be all we need to be 160 feet, or 150 feet. And maybe someone else will camouflage it, so blend in a little bit better for my neighbors. Like, one of my neighbors who owns a crane operator, he's had business near Bow, he is working on cell phone towers all the time, and they're doing camouflage wise everywhere, and he's putting up one in Wolfborough right now. So it's not like people don't do this anymore. So there's all these different options, I feel like if we, as a group, as a team, instead of working against each other, working together. And just take this moratorium opportunities, which apparently in the state of Hampshire has to come from the selectmen, and not from the people. And just revisit the whole thing, do a town plan, and then, if that tower is where it needs to be, and it can be smaller, that would be wonderful. If we find out we get, if that's not the best spot, because if we put four towers up in these locations, and we cover the whole town, I don't want this to be a piecemeal that we regret and end up wishing that we'd done the plan, because it would've been better if we had the plan.
Sir, did you have a question?
Uh, just a couple of.
And again, just, you just gave your name, address for the record.
Yeah, sure. Rob Presley, 15A, Ranch, Lundy Ridge, Kern Pike. My wife and I have the property that's directly, uh, against the proposed location of the tower, the closest property to the planned tower. And just, uh, thanks, Dee, as well said, just a few points of clarification, and. of clarification and emphasis, and I'll be very brief. Uh, to put this into context, the current applicant, uh, before it is, is a plan for one tower and it has been recognized that this is not sufficient. Uh, the current applicant, uh, cannot, uh, guarantee that the tower will get to the school. In fact, we have a independent radio frequency engineer, uh, who has submitted, um, a report to the planning board, uh, that has shown that it will not supply, uh, coverage to the school. And the third point that was not, um, made very clear to the public was that this is an AT&amp;T-only tower. Now, of course, apparently there is some deal in the works, but the, to advertise that this is not made public and it's frustrating to the people that I have canvassed, uh, about this. Um, this is not something that they were aware of. And so our purpose here is not to re, uh, to go over all the arguments. This is not the time or the place for that, but rather to emphasize the importance of taking a step back, a moratorium, to make this right, to do something that the town can be proud of, rather than stumble into something that could be an embarrassment.
Can you comment from the board?
Hi.
Dee, I did look into the item that you brought up in your letter. Thank you very much. I looked up Stratford. They do not have any FCC registered cell phone towers in town currently.
That's what they told me.
There's no FCC registered towers in that town.
I don't know that, I guess FCC would be, communications would have to be, but they even have a best neighbor drag sheet going on.
They may put them in neighbor's towers, Mike.
I looked, I looked, I put a pin in Stratford and I did a ten mile radius and there's nothing.
Well, and I can't, I can't speak to that. I'm sorry. That's incorrect. At least I'd known ahead of time because Scott Schroeder and the other people would be willing to speak to you, all of you. We're interested in doing that, but they do have a plan, um, and...
Yes, they do have a plan. I reviewed the plan.
And then Henniker and, um, Henniker and Sutton and Bradford. I mean, this is like a becoming a norm. Like it doesn't seem to be the...
I looked at Sutton also. They do not have any.
No, I know they don't. We know they're in the middle. That one definitely. It's the early stage because they have some issues.
Okay.
And there are some complexities regarding the geology of Bo, the very hill area.
Right.
And, uh, that I think should be studied and taken into consideration.
Okay. And we are requesting additional information from our RFP, our, our RFP engineer that we hired for additional two coverage maps. One at the top and one right below that. Because the ones he gave us were down at the bottom and they, they weren't fully...
Is that one that Ivan did?
What he was doing was in reverse, showing that at this height, it won't do any right. So that's at the hundred and fifty. So that's what it's saying.
We need a hundred and ninety-five parade, we need a hundred and eighty-five parade.
And we're going to get that.
Mr. Stack, uh, I don't believe that's correct reading of it. I think that the, at one hundred and fifty, the signal begins to deteriorate. It's not as if there's no signal. There's no difference between one ninety and fifty. It begins to deteriorate at one fifty and lower.
I don't know if you know that the power, the proposal that we entered agreement with Rising Tide is for a hundred and ninety-five foot tower. And that's what we're at the planning board asking permission for.
Hundred and ninety with...
I'm sorry, I guess, I guess there's something that happened, but...
After hundred and ninety.
Yeah, that's, that's what our proposal is to the planning board and we're hoping the planning board will move on that. Planning board is, that is at the planning board now for...
Well, we, we concern by respect that the planning board will not have that.
Did I say?
I didn't know there was a town ordinance.
You don't know there's a town ordinance? Oh, yes, there's a very extensive town ordinance.
Right, but there's a process for the planning board to, to weigh that, so the tower code.
There is a process.
Angela, did you have comments?
Um, I do. I am sympathetic to the concerns of the Butters and the community. We want to see a town-wide plan developed. I wish we could turn back the clock fifteen years because that would've been the ideal time for a town-wide plan. It's not like, you know, we didn't have, or it's not like we had cell service then and we lost it and now we're trying to get it back. Like, we didn't have it then. It would've been a great time to have a town-wide plan. But we're all dealing with the hand that we've been dealt and the urgency of getting cell coverage for the safety of our community and reaching the schools. And I think we're in agreement that based on what, I mean, I don't want to speak for anybody, so please correct me if I'm wrong, based on the information we have been given and the maps we have seen, this tower would provide a great deal of coverage beyond what we currently have. And while it wouldn't reach all of Bo, it reaches some really critical areas. And I think there is, um, obviously a need to have another tower at some point. And, you know, I think we can explore that beyond this tower. Um, and I think I would expect that we would be looking into how can we fill in this. Um, I just want to just want to say, there are things that this board can't comment on because of non-public discussions, contract negotiations. So there are things that aren't shared publicly. So I do agree that you are correct. There are things that have not been shared publicly. Um, and so it may feel like you're, you might have all of the information and I'm sorry for that. Um, but I, I think that ultimately, we're trying to do our very best to meet the needs of the entire community. And, um, and that's, that's what we're trying to do.
Thank you, Selectman Brennan. On behalf of the Butters, we feel that some of the information they're using or being given is not accurate regarding the specifics of the coverage. And we feel that what you might gain in political expediency in building a tower might be offset in the embarrassment in not having a tower that works for the town. I mean, that's a grave concern of us.
Matt, any comments? I'll just say, um, David, from my understanding of the moratorium statute, a request would have to come from the planning, planning board to this board?
Yeah. About... Yeah, if we were going to use this, this section of the statute.
So we have an application pending now that regardless, even if the planning board gave us a request tomorrow, that application still has to be addressed, right? Alright. And I will say that, um, I've only been coming up on the end of my third year of selectmen and since I've been selecting for a year and a half, I've spent a lot of the time just on COVID. Uh, and that actually, because of COVID, brought even more, in my opinion, forefront the need for better cell coverage in Bo. Um, because we have a lot of people working from home, staying from home, uh, stuff like that. And I think our records even show, especially that nine-one-one calls have gone up and there's been issues with a lot of coverage traffic. We are somewhat hamstrung that instead of being a community of, uh, two thousand, uh, like you mentioned, whereas subdivisions are coming up, um, the town can make it a condition of subdivisions in the right location, possibly require negative room for cell power. In trying to improve what's a, a really poor area of Bo, where there's not one bar, two bars, there's no bars, um, we're limited on the locations. And I can tell you that locations of, as far as town-owned property, those have been looked at. Those part of the presentation, two years ago, we tried to enter into the negotiations. The town voted down, wanted us to have the study done. So then there was a presentation made, one of the weeks before town meeting last year, showing the different coverage areas and what was represented to us would be the coverage areas. And this was the second tower company, right, that we've been dealing with and we started. Um, and so, um, it's not like as a, as a board, we just threw a dart at the board. Um, there were some other properties we didn't, this gave them maximum coverage. And we, we understand that it's not going to fix every crevice, um, in Bo. I'm on the end of Sharon Drive. I can see from portions of my property, Manchester and Hookset, and if I'm not in front of one particular window, I have no coverage whatsoever with my cell phone. Um, and, um, so, um, we are, we hear you and we're doing our best. We have an application pending right now, which has to be addressed. And as, uh, Selectman Brennan, um, noted, we would love to have, um, you know, more people coming forward who have their own property and saying, hey, we can help improve coverage. Can you help us with the, the tower approval process? Because I would love to see, as you say, a hundred percent coverage. I don't know many towns that have that, but that would be an awesome, you know, thing to boast. But, um, this particular location, um, in, from what we've been told and what I've seen, just my interpretation of what's been told, is a section of town that isn't really going to be helped by a Concorde as a tower or Dunbar as a tower, just because of the topography, as you mentioned. This is like a very unique part of the town. So, um, that's what led us to this point. And so I don't, the planning board considers it on the second. So I'd definitely encourage you to be at the planning board and make your decision, rather than against the sixty-five.
Mr. Selectman, if I could just add...
Just call me Bruce.
Bruce, if I could just add one point. Uh, that area, that town land is sixty-two acres.
Yes.
And the applicant has, in their initial, uh, presentation showed one place, they've moved it three hundred feet closer to our property. And it, uh, you know, there's a sixty-two acre parcel land and we are not against a tower in that parcel land. We would like the applicant to consider moving it.
And we discovered there's higher elevations in that parcel.
There are other...
So no one's saying you'll really stop power.
Is that something you already presented to the planning board?
I haven't had a chance.
We just, we just discovered the...
My wife and I are busy physicians. We, it's difficult for us to know these, but we will be there.
If you could, and Mike's the select order, so I'm sure he'll bring it up, and maybe, Dave, you can at least raise that question to the applicant before the meeting.
Nothing would make us happier than for the selectmen and the planning board to speak, uh, as partners on, in this plan, to build a tower for the town, but to make it so it's at least, as least intrusive on our land as possible.
Right. Well, Dave, could you make sure that that message gets to the applicant before the February second meeting?
Yes.
To see about the higher elevation and whatnot. And again, the welcome to put it in my backyard. I'm going to have coverage.
And I think it's important, uh, it's important to clarify, uh, though we don't need to comment on every statement or misstatement or misunderstanding or different understanding, but this is not an AT&amp;T-only tower. This tower is being built at a height that could have several arrays on it. And there's specifically a prohibition in our agreement that it will not be a one-service provider tower.
This is not information that we are...
Oh, I'm telling you.
No, we, we have Verizon, we know Verizon's coming.
I, well, well, it's, I think there's a difference between knowing Verizon's coming or not and a representation that this is a one provider tower. This is not a tower for one provider. And that's what I'm clarifying.
Okay.
This tower could have five arrays on it. And there, and this tower is, they are prohibited from signing an agreement with a single provider saying that you, we will not have other providers. So that's a single provider tower and that is not what we're getting.
Point taken.
A lot of the information couldn't be disclosed because there's still a little negotiation with the league. So I, I couldn't disclose those. I apologize, but I can't.
And so assuming that that's the case, um, and I believe you know that there's a two-party contingent on this, uh, so there would be more than AT&amp;Ts. We can say that, correct?
All I'm saying is that the agreement doesn't allow them to have a single, I think it's not a single...
At the last meeting?
Which, which I understand. So, so what I would like to add is, is first, um, you know, and my issue with, you know, talking about fifteen years ago, it'd be either the technology and we'd be doing it in plan anyways, right? Because the technology is, it's gone so far in advance, you know, pretty soon we're going to have Starlink on top of all the schools. And there won't be the need for a cell tower because those aren't going into the school for Starlink. And it's going to be done next year. But, um, you know, I keep hearing over and over again that this issue is for, uh, the schools. But it was not, you know, it wasn't schools necessarily asked for, I mean, they, they do need better coverage, but they have, um, the safety issues in place. They have their radios, they have the wireless cell. You can go to any school building I worked in, I was on the school working. You get cell coverage anywhere during school year because it's, you know, wireless. And, um, that, I just feel like sometimes that hasn't been represented well in the big picture. You're like, we're going to have a terrible thing happen and we're not going to have cell coverage and, and all that. And that's, that's not really...
We, we don't have something, so our goal, our goal, two years ago, we looked at this and last year we looked at this, was experts tell us, we ought to place a tower on town land that will deal with the dense spots at the school, which also, you know, let's be honest, the schools also encompass the major thoroughfare through town and our place in fire stations. We've all, over the last month, experienced power outages. And with the power outages come crippling communication outages. And at my house, I, I must use Wi-Fi supported cellular service, just where I live. Um, but when my power goes out, I don't have that option. And I've heard too many stories of, I couldn't get through to nine-one-one. I was, I was lost. Selectmen, help me. This is the plan. This, this board has voted to ask for this to move forward to planning and I hope that they vote it forward. After that happens, I'm happy to participate in, um, discussions about your future plan.
And Mr. Michaeloblis, um, we have no argument with that. I'm an orthopedic trauma surgeon. I depend upon cell coverage for taking care of patients' lives. You understand. And, uh, we are just asking, move it a little bit. So we don't see one hundred and twenty feet of this thing in our front yard. And it's not a huge ask. Would love your support. We really...
I think, if you, if you want it to go higher, that's, that, three feet higher, that, if you're saying that higher three hundred feet in your house, it's going higher.
Elevations.
You're saying it's elevation?
No, it's, it's three hundred feet away from my property line. I see a hundred and twenty feet of this.
No, no, but you said earlier that the three hundred feet from your property is a higher elevation than it's currently...
No, 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 no.
He says...
No, no, I said, I said three hundred, it was, they moved three hundred feet up the hill.
No, but you said there's a higher elevation for...
There is another, I don't know how many feet away.
I know the GPS to be able to...
It's not higher, it's just away.
No, we need...
Yeah, we don't know how many feet away that one is.
No, I misunderstood.
But there is another...
But that would be lower.
No, no, there's a higher elevation on that sixty-two acres. I just don't know how many feet away it is from the current location we have.
Well, when they pick that location, it isn't just the highest spot. It's the highest spot that covers the school, that we can get to, that, you know, it's, that you can build a tower on.
But there's other considerations for that too, such as the spot we're talking about is further in, which would cost more money to develop.
For sure.
And we're all, you know, most of us are capitalists. I have my own business. I hope you'll have your own business. Um, you know, you want to minimize those costs. So, I mean, we think it's more of that than the location. I think it's, it's just going to cost more money to go more.
But I think, I think your point is something that the planning board should at least provide you an answer to on the second. And that's why I've asked, uh, David to reach out and let the applicant know, hey, uh, can we achieve the, you know, similar coverage and move it further away from the residents? And I think that's a reasonable ask and we should have an answer to it. So we can get that answer. And again, they meet on the February second. Ma'am in the gray sweater, sorry.
It's okay. Elena Colby, by Fieldstone Drive. I was just wondering, um, out of curiosity, since there was a mention of an RFP process that didn't take place, just why that would not take place? Just out of curiosity.
Can I address that? I keep hearing that. I'm kind of, I'm kind of tired of hearing it. Number one complaint I get in this town is cell tower service. Five years now, I've been listening to that. I'm, we're going to fix it. The problem with this whole RFP issue is Matt Fur, there was a committee put together, led by Matt Fur, that, that they, they looked, reached out, they had one other company come in, never heard from them again. Rising Tide is the only company that's come forth that wants to do business in this town. And after the last planning board meeting I went to, they're on the hairy edge backing out. And if they back out, you know, you said other companies, I wrote it down.
I have two other companies that will commit.
That are willing to work in Bo and, and build towers.
One of them won't come because they said there's an application process. They're going to respect that. But if the application disappeared, they would be here.
When, when, when the committee, the, the town committee that Matt Fur was on was put together, you, you, you didn't offer those businesses?
I didn't. I didn't know anything about it.
So, I mean, that, that, and that's just it. I mean, you were just saying earlier, a lot of people didn't know a lot about what's going on with the cell tower service. But I will tell you that it's the number one complaint again. But I will tell you that it's the number one complaint again. And I met with that family in Bowe Park, and that dad called nine-one-one three times, lost his call, and this kid passed away. So, you know what, that's the one thing I wanna do is fix the cell tower service. I'm not, I don't wanna wait any longer. Um, it's, it's, it's bad enough as it is. And Chris pointed out the whole, the whole, the whole losing power thing, yep, I mean, that's just another issue that's, it, it, yes, I got a little excited.
I didn't mean to upset you.
It's the number one thing that we deal with.
It caught me off guard, sorry.
At the doctor's point, you know, if, if we can talk about it, uh, at planning board next week, I'm happy, providing everyone's budgeting and happy to show up.
Yeah.
We can data. Uh, my goal is to just get the tower built. I think, you know, get the tower built, and get the tower built that the community wants, and the community clearly wants, and we heard that at planning board.
We did, we also said RFP process. They did say we would do an RFP process.
We will defend the, uh, the value of our property at all costs.
I mean, we should.
We should, I mean, I think you would too.
I have no, no problem about that, and that's why I think your question about us needing further from you, I was thinking we need an answer to that.
Well, I also think you answered what you meant to back, is, it's cost prohibitive. Um, you know, and, and I, like I said, I, I think we've worked a, a pretty good lease with them, and I-
But we, but we don't know, because we haven't negotiated with anybody else.
Yeah.
So, so that's what I'm worried about, I feel like this step back, and now that I know I have other people that are willing to talk, that, you know, I do feel like we're being dictated. At one meeting, the, the Rising Tide people, the Tide people said, we haven't looked at any other spots. And, and that, that was concerning.
They, they looked at, at each street of their spots on town property. They looked at across the way out of Ford's.
We had them look at, we had them look at all our spots, and we talked about, we talked about it in public. But you, you pretty quickly got down to this lot is the best location to serve the critical need of the town, which is Long Hill Road, schools, etc.
Mike, please second.
Just one question.
Yeah. Yep. You stay. Yeah.
Kevin McCann, thirty-two branch, number thirty-two, please. Um, Bruce, you asked if, if the planning board is aware of, Rising Tide, uh, moving that, that position of the tower?
Well, I asked if he, they are aware of his request about getting it further away from his property. I asked if he had brought that up to the board, he said no.
Okay, but the, the position of it, I, I, I'm very familiar with. And they did move the, the tower approximately three hundred feet, uh, towards, towards their property, and thirty-six feet higher in elevation. And my request was, at the very least, you, you presented this at, at the meeting, at the, at the intermissional meeting. They showed, Rising Tide showed it, they showed the coordinates, and they showed the exact spot where that was. And I believe that they were disingenuous, they moved it, they, they got everybody to agree with that, and said, in their words, we don't wanna be too close to somebody's property, things like that, they said real nice things. And then they moved it right up the hill towards their property, thirty-six feet higher. I say, at the very minimum, they need to chop thirty-six feet off of the top of that tower. Thank you.
Uh, I just, I just had a quick clarification, simply, because I'm, I'm getting confused by everything. I heard, misheard one thing earlier about that, I had a doubt. Now, I just heard that there was a meeting where everybody agreed to the placement, I wasn't there.
No, 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 no.
You just said that.
The, the-
You said everyone agreed to the placement, and I said, it'd be clear, that never happened. The, the people who have, have objected to the placement have objected to it all along.
Their presentation at the meeting showed it centrally in that property.
I understand, you said, we all agreed. Everybody agreed.
Maybe somebody can play back, I can say that.
I heard it differently, I, I understand what you're saying. Uh, sir, in the blue, we can, oh, I'm sorry, I thought the gentleman, to your, your right had his hand up, but it's you that- Blue tops, I didn't know who was talking.
Oh, yeah, it's okay. So, this is more Little Cricket Drive. Um, in preparation for the annual meeting in March twenty-twenty-one, um, I studied the maps in Bowe's community office. I found that there were six or seven other hills that were between six and seven hundred feet. As a matter of fact, one of the seven hundred foot hills is at the other end of this same parcel of town land, um, that this, uh, cell tower was being, that put it on, um, being considered for the cell tower. Uh, coincidentally, this hill is easily accessible at the end of Sharon Drive, as Mr. Marshall earlier mentioned. Um, and unfortunately, at that meeting, I didn't have the chance to say, you know, maybe not my backyard for the cell tower, or under the town, but, um, I'm glad you offered to have it on your hill.
Bring it on over, I'll, I'll sign the lease tomorrow.
So great, so will you make that known to everybody?
I, I've made it known, for, for a long time, I've been shut down, uh, years back about a cell tower over off my property. I've been shut down for a windmill because of ice throw, so it's very frustrating.
Cell towers, or water towers now?
I look at several, uh, towers, cell towers, but I don't get signal off because they're too far away from what I-
I think, I think that wherever future cell towers are placed, we can be part of a future discussion. Uh, you know, this one, we have a tower that's gonna be placed on a site that we know, we talked about, by land or approval. Um, I think we have the recommendations for, uh, a planning, uh, uh, moratorium. That will come at us if it does, from the planning board, after the, they vote to do such a thing.
I don't think we can do a moratorium for cell tower, cell phone towers. That only applies to subdivisions. If we're developing too quick, we can put a moratorium on a building for minutes, correct David?
Mm-hmm.
But this does not apply to cell phone towers.
I think if your board votes on it, I think we're gonna have legal counsel vote for it, hold it for us.
Yeah, right.
We always make that decision tonight, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
Um-
Oh, and, you haven't done yet, right?
Well, yeah, I think-
I don't want to cut you off.
No, thank you, thank you. Um, no, I think that, um, and I'll, you know, as we, we have to repeat what's been said, but we do need RFPs, we need to go out in front of the people.
Yeah, I don't, our legal counsel said we did not. So if you're, if I, if he's wrong, then let me know, we can, give us your opinion. But we, we, we don't do this stuff like, we have legal counsel who told us whether or not we can move forward with the lease after last year's COVID. So I-
Twenty-twenty-one, or twenty-twenty-one, though.
No.
Twenty-two, oh, no, that's all right.
Vote it down to twenty-twenty-one.
Right. Okay, but I just feel that the town of Bowe, if, you know, doesn't have anything right now, and all the towns around us know that, and I think this is an opportunity for us to set an example, do it the right way. Good enough, the possibility of having to delay it a few more months, but I think we need to put that out further, that we need to have some other opinions and other things, and not to put it in the middle of five neighborhoods, all whose houses will lose property value if that tower goes up near us. And that's something that the town needs to be aware of, up to twenty percent decrease in property value for cell tower. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Yeah, Christine Friesen, fifteen eight branch, Little Cricket Drive, please. Um, what were your thoughts on with moratoria? The FCC's Local and State Government Advisory Committee, it was written by Donna Hughes and Tilla, I, I think they represent-
That's how it works.
Yeah, exactly. So it does say in there for a cell tower, because they have, it's like thirty pages advising towns how to do this. They say moratoria should be for a fixed period, for a specific termination date, so like one hundred and twenty days. And it's, the reason in many cases should be, the reason they do a moratorium is when, um, communities feel like there are, they need to address challenges posed by these cell towers. New Hampshire communities must enact moratorium by vote as legislative body. So this is done, this is written in the New Hampshire law, okay? Um, so this was written by your, as I said, Donna Hughes.
Okay.
And I, I can forward that to you.
Thank you, yes. Uh, I'm going on what I got from community development.
Yeah, and that was, that was found by a, a different lawyer, and that is more planning board community thing. They felt like that could be done, that moratorium could be done too. But there are two different bodies that address the moratorium, okay? One is written by the legal team representing Bowe, and it's all four towns, I think it was written in twenty-fourteen, four towns, advising them how to put in cell towers. And the reason they put that in is for towns like the one we mentioned before, when cell towers suddenly is put in, and they feel like, hey, we need to just put a halt on this process, evaluate things, you know, like our ordinance and such things. So that's the reason that's there.
So that's currently not in our ordinance, the only thing that's-
No, I'm saying that's New Hampshire.
Yeah, the only thing that's addressed in our ordinance is, is development.
But, Bruce, we don't get, we don't have to make a motion on approving or opposing a-
No, we wait for the requests from the, uh, planning board. That's how our statute works.
I do want that property to be regular with my daughter. I too was psyched when I heard, great, we're gonna get cell phone coverage, because I too, I'm a physician, I rely on it. And I too looked at the original map that they had and thought, that will be fine. When I walked that property, I actually kinda did a beeline where they were, and you go straight from the, there's, um, a bunch of snowmobile trails, you go straight there. I had an altimeter, there's a spot around seven hundred feet here, there's a spot right near your house at around seven hundred feet. The argument that this is the only site they can choose is false. However, there are no maps of the cell reception there, and we just have this gentleman do it for us, depending on that cell tower. So, the, when this was proposed to us originally, and the town voted on it, they said the citizens will be able to talk to the planning board about placement, about camouflage, about height. We never felt like we had an option to talk about it, it was basically, this is the placement, this is the height, and there's no camouflage. We expected, and our call, and a lot of people that we know in the town, thought that would happen. And the fact that this feels like it's being rammed down our throat, we need you to support us. We need our selectmen to not say things on social media that may be misleading for the community. We don't wanna commit, we don't want the community to go up against each other. So I love what you're saying, I really appreciate what you're saying.
I didn't post anything, I'm totally-
No, I know you did, I know you did, other people did, I know you did, and I, and I really appreciate that as an elected member of our community, I think that's great, and I'm not on social, I'm not on social media because I take care of my community, and I don't think it's the best thing to do. So that's my-
Thank you very much.
I think, I, I just need to say that, I think that, I'm surprised to hear that you feel like you've been heard, because I, we've had more discussions at the planning board about cell phone towers.
There's been no negotiation. When I read about other towns and how they interacted with their community, there's negotiation, there's need in the middle, there's like, guess what? Our community wants us, but can we just do it a hundred and fifty feet in camouflage? I've read so many things, that's where I realize it's railroads.
We allowed, allowed you to veto, I'm not saying that, but we had a lot of meetings to discuss it. And I think it's important to understand what I understood as the voters' desire last year, which was, solve the problem at the school.
And I don't think you say that like you're-
Let me, I, solve the problem at the school. And experts tell me that tower placement in this spot, a hundred and ninety feet, will solve that problem.
Even, even, even our-
No, I thought, if they, when I, I, yes.
Even our team ain't on record saying they can't promise the high school.
I, not on record with us.
No, they're on record, we're gonna say they cover the school.
And as, as was the company we dealt with before.
Correct.
Entirely independent company saying, here are the town lands, where can we put a tower and solve this critical safety issue? And they both came up with almost exactly the same spot.
Middle school and elementary school, yeah.
Almost exactly the same spot. Um, and, so I think, I, I know that we're always gonna hear about my backyard from most people, and that's tough, but it's just a safety issue.
Angela, you had a comment?
Yes, and who am I to address you? Um, one thing that I've heard a couple of times is that Rising Tide Towers is dictating to this board.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I wanna make it clear that this board has had many meetings with Rising Tide Towers, and that every single one of us has asked questions, um, similar to the questions that you're asking. Um, we have pushed them, we have gone back and forth with them, we have had frustrations with them, we have not let them dictate this process. So I wanna make that clear.
Thank you for pointing that out, I wrote the same thing down, they are not dictating the process.
They really are not, and, and I, um, understand that different people portray themselves differently in public, and sometimes they say things that it makes it hard to receive, or hard to trust what they're saying. Um, but regardless, this board has done what we can to negotiate and push, um, Rising Tide Towers. So I wanted to make it clear that they are not dictating this process. Um, the other thing I'd like to address is, cell phone companies like Verizon or AT&amp;T, they know their coverage maps, they know where there are gaps. They will seek out to fill those gaps if it is a high priority for them, and they will construct towers to fill those gaps and put their equipment on. Since we have not had coverage all this time, and we've had cell phones for a long time, we've all been using cell phones for quite a while, right? Town of Bowe has not had great cell service. But Verizon hasn't said that Bowe needs a cell tower, AT&amp;T has not said. We need a cell tower in Bowe. They have not decided on their own to put up a cell tower. We're saying, the town has said in a vote, we need cell coverage, so what can we do to bring it here? Okay, and that's where Rising Tide has come in to say, we'll make a tower available. We have, the town has made land available to, for Rising Tide to explore, um, where the best location would be on town land. And then they reach out to the cell phone companies and say, can you put your equipment here? Do you see how much coverage you're gonna get? You're gonna fill these gaps that you don't think are high priority, but since we're building a tower, it's gonna cost you less to put your equipment on? And that's where these agreements come into play. So, these big cell phone companies like AT&amp;T and Verizon, we weren't a high priority for them. Okay? So it's really important to understand that part of it, that if we do not seek out, um, a cell tower company, we wouldn't necessarily be getting Verizon knocking on our door, because they haven't, in all this time, they haven't said, your gap is, you know, is worth, you know, your town is worth putting a tower in. So I think it's important to know how that dynamic works.
So, in that case, and how do we know we won't get AT&amp;T and T-Mobile?
Can you state your name for the road?
Oh, I'm so sorry, Chris Friesen, fifteen eight branch, later term, please. But if, if, if that's the case, and how do we know that we won't get AT&amp;T and T-Mobile? If they're not interested in us, I'm just curious.
Well, um, I don't know about T-Mobile, I know we're gonna get AT&amp;T.
But if Verizon's not interested in us, how do we know that we-
I, I know what she said, she said they're not interested, proactively, they didn't come to us, we had to seek them out. We sought out Rising Tides and the company, the previous company, to solve this commu, this safety issue for the community.
Okay, yeah, because I know there's always like the fear of the empty tower, that was always also an argument.
This board has made sure that the tower will not be empty. I think that's as far as I can go in saying, and this board has insisted that this will not be an empty tower.
Uh, we, and I don't attempt to be at the planning board, because I don't know-
I'm gonna be there if we don't have a budget.
Sure. Mike, Mike will be there, he's our, Bruce and I will be there, one of us will be there by the end of the night.
Yeah, I'm at that's one.
So we'll be there.
Just for curiosity purposes on my part, who were the vendors or the carriers that you said are interested in coming to town?
Um, Industrial Communications spoke to one, and, um, the other person I, I, that I wouldn't say until, unless there was an opening, I agree to keep that. So it was a different, different situation. Um, that was also the same commitment to get a town plan done at sixty to ninety days maximum. Um, and that's, and that's why we wanted to ask for the moratorium.
I know, but Desperate Communication has put up some towers and other towers.
So, but, um, Industrial Communications spoke to town board, who's one of the others, and, and, and that's one, this also, like, we wanted this, I was excited. I used to have a booster at my house, and then when it went four G, it didn't work anymore. During somebody's fight, I was like, booster, it didn't work anymore. Um, but, and, and again, a- all over the cell coverage, it is important, we want the same thing. It's, I worry about the company we're dealing with, I understand you guys did due diligence, but this is new for all of us on that thing. And the fact they won't negotiate for camouflage, why won't they do, negotiate for camouflage? Because it costs more, and they can only put four carriers on. So it's less money, but if, if you look where the location is, I mean, they talk about the balloon, okay, oh, can't put a balloon. Well, look at all the areas they put for the pictures, even the planning board was raising eyebrows looking at some of the pictures, projections that they did, because they were all in the lowest areas, they didn't have to go on any residence land that was gonna be affected, that's very deceptive practice to me, that's not transparency. And you guys are about transparency, and all of us want transparency, and that to me is very deceptive. So what do we do, we go buy our own balloon? It costs twenty-five dollars, and we put it up, we measured a hundred and ninety, it wasn't hard. And we left it up there, and we find out that other companies will leave it up for twenty-four to forty-eight hours, so everybody can announce it to the towns, so they come and see it. Like Pinnacle Drive. Pinnacle Drive, I mean, for a big surprise with this, this tower, because we didn't know, we just started going around town, started taking pictures when the balloon was up, but that new development is gonna have a beautiful view of that tower, more so than even our neighbors do, that are right next to it. And so these are things that- And so these are things that we feel like, because they didn't do some things that are the norm for other tower companies to do, to cooperate with the citizens in that community. They are also not our best choice for this stuff.
I would just note for you that before town meeting last year, they did put up a drone at the elevation of the tower and show the three hundred and sixty degree view of what you could see from the top of the tower. Um, and, and, and they presented that, um, at that informational meeting to the town.
It did. I saw, I saw it, but that doesn't show you what it looks like.
The direction is not what the drone sees, it's what we see.
Yeah.
I understand that, but they, I'm just pointing out, they did, could have been a work before town meeting last year.
When I first heard it, I was like, that sounds good. But then you look at the view, and then we got that report. And, I mean, Mike, you know what I'm talking about. I mean, it was like, no. Um, and, you know, they're all these low, I, they, they didn't even have to go, if you're really trying to be transparent, why would you not ask the butters? To see what it looks like, which I found is, is somewhat of a standard. Not everybody's doing it, but somewhat of a standard with other companies. Because they want to be welcome to do more towers. Um, and they don't want to have that animosity. So I just feel like if, you know, um, the negotiation you did was, I'm, I know you did, you guys worked hard. I know it's taken a lot to get here. I understand the committee worked hard, and I don't know why they didn't find anybody else, because I just spent an afternoon with two other people on common. So maybe things have just changed since the committee. Uh, I don't know. There's a lot of cellphones, big business, very big business.
Some of the, I, I guess, difference from what I've learned of it is, you'll have some companies, I don't know if it's these, that say, oh yeah, hell, we're interested. They, they'll just lock the land down, and then they do nothing.
Uh, there's, there's a number of people in town that.
Went to town meeting the year before, and why they stopped providing us information. We went to town meeting, and we said, we don't have any idea about it. Yes, we said, we don't either, because they dissed us. But they're all, those are just like speculative. So of course, if I was in that business, I'd say, oh, hell yeah, I'd like to have a foot in it, involved.
And I realize I don't sound like I have a contract about radio.
But that's one of the differences, is these guys build it all.
We saw, we saw.
Yeah, these guys build it all.
There are hills in town.
We have one more question in the back. This, this time I'm getting it right. It's a gentleman.
Yeah, I'm on the floor, I'm in the corner, uh, on the parking drive. Let's remember, the informational, uh, meeting, they admitted, R T T, that it is a two-tower at least problem. So why are they offering just one? You have to take care of all of Bo.
Are you saying that the school, to get, to give coverage for our school is a two-tower solution? Because I was at that.
At the informational meeting, I've got those.
Are we talking about all of Bo, or are we talking about the school that we asked them to provide coverage for safety?
He said, he said it's a two-tower solution.
I'm asking.
And clearly you don't have coverage for everybody in the town.
I'm asking for clarification of, is the two-tower solution.
The two-tower comment was to cover.
The whole town?
No, well, then even then, they said most of them.
Okay, yeah, I.
Take care of Bo.
So you, you're, they should put a second tower up.
But we have the vendor.
Wherever it needs.
We're willing to put the antennas on these towers, as we keep.
Absolutely. So what, what would it hurt to take the time to find out? And if we, if we can't put, if we can't get anything writing, or we can't get a commitment, then, you know, we have the last sixty or ninety days.
Do you have another comment, please?
Um, yeah, you're.
I'm sorry.
Oh, Chris Priesian, fifteen inch later term of peace. Um, you mentioned, um, whether, how R T T builds and things like that. A couple of things. R T T was turned down in northern Maine, and the complaint was on the, on the denial, was that, um, they said they launched some balloons, and nobody was able to see them in town. The town ended up very upset with how they dealt with them, and they denied them. And that's all public. I get up to the planning board. The second thing, I don't know how much you all checked them out. You know they own eleven towers?
Well, I don't know.
You can get this through the F C C. So they own eleven towers. They said they've built, how many? Does anybody know?
A hundred.
Hundred. So if they built a hundred, they own eleven, so they are in the business of selling.
I know, I think some of them, they were, they were built as part of a project. They were brought in to, to coordinate.
So did they, did they only build eleven? I'm just confused, like, how many?
No, they built, my understanding is they built many more than eleven. I understand, I thought they owned twelve, but I may have looked it up.
They own eleven, F C C, right? Now, they own eleven. All of them are in northern Maine. Um, during the informational meeting, Patrick Robinson did admit, and it's all on YouTube, that they have never built in such a residential community as, as this before. Um, they, all the towers they own are at one hundred and ninety feet lattice. And I don't think they do a lot else. I hear they're looking to expand and change things, and that would be lovely if they could get used to getting, because towers in communities, they get you more money. Towers in residential communities do get you more money when you sell them. So hopefully they're not gonna sell it. But it looks like if they have built a hundred, they are looking to sell it. So if they wanna sell it, they wanna build it high, they wanna build it cheap. I just want you guys to take this into consideration, because we are the taxpayers, and we don't want to do this in the back of the taxpayers. If they really wanna be part of the community, then I think they will work with us more. But they have been turned down by other communities when they wouldn't work with them.
All right. Thank you very much. And I encourage you to come to the, uh, planning board meeting.
Would you forward that information to me, please?
Yeah, sure.
Number four, David?
Yes, he is.
Here I am.
Thank you, Dee.
You're welcome.
Hey, um, so I'm here, giving you my second quarter financial report, which as usual, um, is positive.
Ee-haw.
Um, revenues are doing very well. Um, motor vehicles, as usual, is up about a hundred and forty thousand dollars, um, from last year. And, uh, it's over the fifty percent mark, which, um, means that, uh, we're above budget or estimates. And in fact, that does not include one of our major, um, firms in Bo that, uh, uh, usually registers in December, but this year didn't, didn't bring in their fleet, uh, information till this month. So, um, I expect that to be even better. Um, room and meals, uh, we had it, the state had a record year in, in, in meals and rooms tax collection. Um, also, there was a change in the distribution formula. Um, so we got an extra hundred and forty-two thousand dollars this year in, or last year, in, in room and meals tax, which is in, uh, this budget, budget. Um, and interest on deposits, uh, is up almost fifty-six thousand dollars, uh, over last year when we were making a fifty. Um, and in December, uh, money was earning just over four and a half percent.
Just over what?
Four and a half.
Four and a half.
It was four point five one.
Is it still with that, my account? They are phenomenal to us.
That's awesome.
Four and a half, that's amazing. I could send them a Christmas card.
The ambulance revenues, that's up?
It's up for the change, though.
Is that all because of the fees or?
No, it had, uh, an increase in services also, contributing to that.
The increase, our increase was just on town transport, so, so that, that's car accidents, it's a small, very small part of it, I think they're doing.
Yeah, as, as Elliot has said before, uh, in, in the budget meetings, you know, their calls are up.
But all in Bo, Jeff, for mutual aid?
Um, I, I don't know, um, whether, you know, where the calls, the increase in calls are coming from. But if it's mutual aid, even if we, we transport somebody from Concord or Dunbar, um, we still bill for that transport. So it's not like mutual aid on, on a fire call or something like that. If we transport, we bill. Then on the, uh, on the expenditure side, um, we are, uh, just under fifty percent, which is good, so we're tracking slightly under budget. Two areas, we have one area of savings, community development, because of the, uh, turnover in staff, we're seeing, um, a savings of about twenty-seven thousand dollars there. We are seeing a big increase in the expenses, uh, so far this year in the police department, because they've been fully staffed.
Don't change us.
I know, I know. Um, but they're still under fifty percent, so, um, last year was simply because, you know, they, um, were understaffed shortly, yeah. Uh, and then, uh, a couple of things I've been tracking, just kind of out of curiosity, make sure they don't, um, get, uh, run away, is, um, vehicle, fuel costs, um, were about three thousand dollars from last year, and about fifty percent, fifty-seven percent of budget. So, yeah, but nothing that's gonna break the bank. Um, and our electricity costs, um, are ten thousand dollars over a lack of this time. But we're only at forty-three percent of budget. So we did a little bit better budgeting our estimated increase in electricity than we did in, in the fuels. So, um, we're safe there.
Any word on the salt? Yeah, yeah. I wanna go on budget on that?
No.
Tim this morning, says he's doing good.
Yeah.
I mean, they had, yeah. Happy snow.
Yeah, it was a light, I saw for November, December.
Yeah, ask them next week.
But he did say he got six trailer loads.
But you know, in past years, we've had, you know, I think the average used to be ten, ten snowstorms a winter.
I just, the salt price is still up high. The salt price is still up high, and trucking costs, that's what I was worried about. But so far, I think Tim's, Tim's.
Tim says he's.
Yeah, yeah.
And Tim's a good player. He had, he had a good amount of salt to start.
Actually, Pembroke came to us for help with salt.
They were short? Any help?
No. Anything else to note, sir?
Uh, no, everything else is, is tracking, uh, at a better than usual, you know, property taxes were due at the beginning of this month. And they came in, um, you know, tens of percentage points from previous years, so. Up more than one, you know, I think a little bit more than last year, but a little bit from the year before, like, you know, it's up ninety percent plus, so. For that's, that's a good sign.
Anything else for Jeff?
Uh, I'd love to touch, I, because he's here, and, and we have a couple of edits from the budget committee, Jeff. I can't find that piece of paper. Do you have it?
Uh, yes. Is it layer in your packet?
It is.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, page sixty-nine.
So if you guys don't mind, let go out of order and just get your, uh, agreement on the changes that the budget committee made on our budget that are pretty minor. So, I think there are six changes in total. Uh, so the budget committee went through all of our town budget, uh, in the night, uh, plus the, the library on the second night. Uh, they commented us on delivering a plaque, actually made a budget. Uh, I heard more than once, how do you do that? So, you know, I think that's kudos to us. Um, they made some very minor changes. Outlined on page sixty-nine, there was a seventy hundred dollar change in personnel.
Yeah, that was, um, it had gotten reduced quite a bit from the previous year when we had to do some extra, um, or because of social distancing, we couldn't do the employee.
Oh, that's right. This is the, this is the, um, returning our, our paid-in-lunches to their, their, their funding employer.
So this is adding seventeen million?
It's adding fifty dollars, yeah. Um, because they felt that, that the selectmen cut too much out, and they wanted to make sure that we were appreciating. The employees.
They were, you know, when you, when you deliver negative budget, they get, it's very easy to spend a few dollars. They did the same thing. They found that line where we reduced facilities two thousand below the list of things that they thought were good. And so they asked us to put two thousand dollars back into the facility line. Uh, they took four hundred out of, uh, a similar kind of title in the police line. It was.
It was, uh, medical services, I think, for like D W S and that type of thing, where the department was asking for an increase, but the historical numbers did not show that need.
Uh, in, um, uh, motor vehicle fees, they increased. They believe that we were too conservative on the revenue for motor vehicle registration fees, based on what Jeff just said. They're probably right. So they raised that fifty thousand. And they did the same thing on other revenues accounting for the interest that.
The interest on the bonus. Okay, it's, it's been so good.
And then they did a two capital improvement request, C I P, uh, funding increase. And so we decided to put off the six million, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars this year. And we put that off, that reduced the payment into C I P by twenty-one thousand dollars, because this is another year out. And they thought, no, fund it now. Maybe the truck goes down next year or not, but fund it, and so that's in there. And what was the other one, Jeff?
Um, there was actually three. They put, um, they put the thirty thousand dollars back in the contribution to the fire truck.
Fire truck.
For, for the same reasoning.
That's the Ford truck that they put off.
Yeah. And then they, um, added twenty thousand dollars to the recreational improvements, um, recognizing we really need to start looking at, you know, the yields.
They like what you're doing about getting some work out, the additional level of appeals, and just like, hey, let's put some money aside. I think that was great.
Perfect.
Uh, what was, is that correct?
Those, that's right.
Uh, ultimately, their changes, uh, increased the, uh, budget shortfall to a negative one percent. So we're gonna have a year-over-year increase if we adopt all of theirs, as negative one percent. I'd recommend, I'd like to see us support them and approve, uh, their.
We need a motion. So a motion approved, yeah, that's by the budget committee.
I'll second.
Discussion, what do you agree? All in favor? Aye, aye, both.
Obviously, that's our required step that we kind of endorse that, bringing forward a united budget is, I think, a huge shift. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Jeff.
Uh, page eighty-three, there was one late request that came in for funding from an agency. Uh, so, actually, Jeff had just got, so he and I talked, and said, well, we're at this point, we're ready to sign off.
The community action.
Community action program.
They had staff turnover. And I think the new staff didn't realize the, the, um.
Need to send out.
Budget requests, um, but they, they're asking for forty-two hundred dollars, and, um.
Is this what we've done in the past, Jeff? Sorry, did you mean it right?
Uh, it's, it's in the ballpark.
I don't know that we had a constitution then last year, Jeff.
Yeah, we did.
No, typically cap we do, because they'll, they should, they at least show us what the dollar amount of services that they provide to residents in town.
What are we doing, like five hundred?
No, that was for, uh, Red Cross. No, that was for CASA. That was five hundred dollars.
Sorry, I'm getting them, it's all the C A's.
Uh, Community Action was twenty-nine hundred last year. It's on page eight of the, that budget summary that, um, from the budget committee.
I think that given that we passed our budget cycle, we've already presented our budget to the budget committee, um, that, that I think we need to stick to our process. What I would look for us to do is to be closer to when we make that kind of, closer to July, if our numbers, if our revenue numbers look like they look now, if we can make a motion out of, uh, general funds.
Does, does that work with their schedule, Jeff, as far as when they need money will be taken?
We wouldn't get.
Yeah, because they wouldn't, they wouldn't get it till, till July, so they're gonna wanna get it till in June.
Just put it on our agenda to have a discussion when we do our.
I think that's a great idea. Any other comments on it? Perfect.
Well, we should go something by March, I think, as far as our budget.
Right.
Oh, yeah. We, we know it now, but they wouldn't, I don't wanna give it to them off cycle, for giving them no problem. It'll be.
All right. Motion approved. You can send it, Jeff, sir. Whoa, any little questions?
Sorry, we're about done.
That's fine, we're made.
Wrapping up.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
Jeff, I, I alluded to it, but, um, we couldn't get through our budget treaty one night, uh, with a ten million dollar budget, if it wasn't for your crack understanding. And also kind of keep me in the lane, because I sometimes miss, remember all the different things and reasons why we do it.
Well, it's a good tag team, too, Chris, because I remember some things, and you remember other things. So between the two of us, we remember most everything.
It went well. And the interesting thing, it was the first time ever, I think, there was a modification of the library budget down by forty thousand. And so we obviously, like, and don't have a vote on that.
Did you get it on the road?
Well, no, we did it on the recognition, but.
Now you can do your motion for the consent, Jeff, sir. So.
I'll second.
Any discussion with the consent, Jeff? All in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed, unpassable, yes, please. David, what's this certificate? Do you need to order that?
Oh, this is, yeah, yeah. It's on the, uh.
Is it further than that?
Yeah.
I missed it, that's all. All right, I'll save that for Elliot.
It's number nine.
Town managers' report, David?
Yes, we've, I've had two short weeks, so I have nothing. Yes, we've had, I've had two short weeks, so I have nothing to add, other than things are rolling along still. Still, I, again, a lot of breaking all requests, very intricate ones. I keep, I know I keep saying that takes a lot of time.
It does, I understand.
All different topics. David, where do we stand with the safety center deficiency? I was supposed to have that from council, so I will follow. Once again. I gotta, yeah, I don't know where he's.
Can you also help determine our deadline or statute of limitations, in case we need to.
I'll round that, I'll round it as well.
Cause I don't wanna let it procrastinate.
Yeah, we're done.
Alright, is there a motion? Did Chris disappear?
Yeah, um, so you wanna take, I don't know if you wanna take these separately, but motion approved the, uh, minutes on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, we have to take them separately.
Do you think the ones that we need a clarification on, someone will be, make the motion, and then you guys discuss it, it does, I don't know how that works.
Well, someone seconded it, and then we'll discuss, we have a lot of discussion.
Right. So what's your second?
What?
December thirteenth is on or at first?
I just, I opened the letter, the letter eight, that's all, the only reason I did that one first.
Was there a second?
Second.
Alright, discussion on the December thirteen minutes?
The issue with the December thirteen minutes, um, has to do with when we vote on the non-public session that came at the top of that meeting. Um, the draft minutes say the motion was made, um, by selectman Poynter and seconded by, uh, selectman Brennan, um, to go into non-public session at the top of the meeting. I definitely did not second that because I was opposed to go into non-public session.
I don't even recall making that motion.
Right, so I think we were trying to clarify.
But I was back and forth, and I hadn't started my seat yet.
But I know that we all took a vote, and, so I don't know who made the motion. I know I didn't second it.
I didn't.
Tight look, actually.
No, cause I was back and forth, and then I got pulled away, that was the meeting that I found out right before the meeting, that we were actually having that non-public, so then I was trying to figure out how to get this going, and then I got pulled away.
I knew there was a vote, cause Angela answered the question a lot of the forty minutes, and then we all voted to go in.
Right, but I.
I don't know, was that, Chris wasn't here.
Chris wasn't here, like I said, I was back and forth, so I don't know who made the.
I brought it up, so I assume I made the motion? And did you second it, I think? I just know there was a discussion, you can, you can tell you can add your questions.
Yes, and I know, right, I know there was a roll call vote, because that's what we have to do for non-public session, and I know I voted against it, so. It's just a matter of making sure that these minutes.
I brought it up, so I must made the motion, so I wish I was here back in the tent, they go over it, but. I wish to discuss a lot of the council.
Okay.
I can check to see if I have notes, cause I, I write on my pads, and you want me to check on that, and then we can fix it.
Yeah.
Alright, let me do that, I'm sorry.
I remember it like you remember it, that you, you brought it up, and I remember like bringing it up, and then I laughed, and then.
I raised it, and then, oh, you seconded it, and then you asked a question about.
I have a question for discussion purposes, and then I did a roll call.
You know, I'll just go check my notes, usually I drop notes on my sheet, so let me just.
I thought we just got pointed into the other room. I don't recall making motion, I thought we just got pointed into the.
No, I wrote it up and said, uh, no, I'm, I'm, let me just check my notes.
So, do you want to.
We're in table thirteen, till next time, and then on the tenth, I have to abstain, because I was not.
So I'll make a motion, accept January tenth, meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion on the January tenth minutes?
Sort of, kinda.
Yeah.
Tony, can you use note in the record that Chris had to step out after the, um.
Yep, after the town manager's report.
I think you left before town manager, I think you left after Jeff.
Okay, oh, yes, yes.
Alright, can you use note that?
Yep.
Alright, any discussion on the January tenth minutes?
Yes. I'd like to clarify a little bit on the energy committee to see RFPs.
I wasn't here, so you, you can.
Following the accepted, uh, process that has to come to David, and to council, and to us, before any RFPs are issued.
Right, and I, um, I didn't understand Chris's motion, when I looked at that and watched the video, um, it didn't even seem necessary, number one, number two, um.
What page do you have, number four?
Uh, thirty-four.
Thirty-one.
Um, and this is what, what I had in the generator, so if you wanna deal with it now, that's fine, but just the, um, the, the, the energy committee is not doing their own, they're doing their RFPs, but they run through our town manager.
And I'm not sure what was discussed, um, if it was, the process was discussed. If this is what you got out of the minutes, I mean, it's probably not. So we should leave the minutes alone, and then address them as a separate issue.
So did you wanna approve these now?
Bruce?
Yes.
Sandy Crystal, one should be drawn, I did have a suggested change, uh, edit to, uh, something that was in the minutes, it was in the section that I was discussing, the warrant article in the very last, which I think is three. And it's like the very last, um, sentence, it said the board would like town council to see if where it could be limited to, it says go only, and it should say vote open spaces only.
I wasn't here, so is that right, you got three, Andrew, no?
That was a request from one board member, so I don't know, that was some different agreed upon, uh, people board, but there was a request by one board member to consult with town, yeah, I think it was Chris, to consult with town council to see, and the rest of this, right, and to see if where you can limit it to go, open spaces. But it wasn't the board as a whole.
That's right.
And it wasn't a motion or anything.
When I, when I listened to the, only, to the video, when I was, uh, I thought, my understanding was just from what I could see, and I wasn't at the meeting, so you guys decide. I thought there was a question because of the proposal allowing the Conservation Commission to expend funds outside the town, and Chris wanted it to be spent only in town.
That's not the warrant, it's, there are two optional powers in that section, and we were only going for the one that was within town to qualify organization. And vote open spaces is a qualified organization, and Chris wanted to make sure that the qualified organization was vote open spaces, so. Andrew's, um, Andrew was right, that it isn't the board would like, it was Chris asked for review by town council.
Um, the, is your understanding that thirty-six A four A B is limited to in-town property?
No, it's, it's not, it is thirty-six A, colon, four A.
Yes.
And it's, uh, one, it's one B.
Correct, and you think that one B, your understanding is, is that's limited to boat properties?
Yes, one A would allow, uh, the language for one A would allow money to be spent outside the town, but for B, that was just to, for qualified organized organizations.
Well, as I understand, one A, it allows the Conservation Commission to expend funds for the purpose of interest in land outside.
Okay, and we were asking, the warrant art, there, there is.
But B isn't limited to in-town, should we just approve?
But if you don't, but if you don't approve, it's going to only be in-town.
Right now, we're talking about minutes.
You guys.
That's right, it's the next.
It isn't, you know, if the edit is to make a vote open spaces, then I don't see any issue with that, but, hey, Chris?
And it was Chris.
Eric, what's you doing out there?
Sorry.
Chris, when you don't know what you said on the minutes of January tenth, page thirty-two in your packet, whether you meant limited to boat only, or limited to boat open spaces only?
Um.
Regarding Sandy's, uh, request on the order.
And this, right now, we're just discussing a change to the minutes.
My understa, my understanding, without knowing what you're talking, my understanding was, my question was, whether or not any qualified entity could be, would be required to be a boat entity.
Oh, okay.
Cause, because I, my, my fear was, that any, that a qualified entity could possibly exist that wasn't a boat-controlled entity. I wanted to be sure that that never could happen.
Alright, so.
It, I, I'm not sure, I'm, I apologize.
So maybe you just change that wording a little bit, uh.
What pages it kind of.
Page thirty-two, is the comment about, uh, you want a town council to look to see if the wording can be limited to boat only?
Uh, tonight is boat-controlled entity, so.
Thanks.
And that is Chris's request, yeah. So when, I just wanted for clarification. So, Chris said, I think we should have with town council review it, so if you all agree, that's, that's why I got confused.
Yeah, I'm sure why we just wanna point out, Chris, I, I, I would like to know from our council as well, so.
I'm sorry, because it wasn't a, a vote or anything, it was, it was just a.
It's just my concern, yeah, we weren't voting on the motion.
So are the minutes okay for January tenth? All in favor?
Aye.
One abstained, because I was in the front. Alright, we'll hold on to thirteenth, so. Number two.
So.
And then, yeah.
I, I, I could, before you, see, you started, um, I did get a response from town, council about this topic we're just talking about. And what he's advising is that the statute clearly states what the article is supposed to be, you can't deviate from that. But however.
A whole article, I'm sorry, a whole article?
Yeah, you can't make an addition or change to it to say, to be given to only boat spaces, it has to be the wording that's there, basically.
Specific statute, sure we're.
Yeah.
So then, if we were, if they're asking, if we were to adopt that, Appalachian Mountain Club, or the National Forest Society could be the beneficiary of this one.
Yeah, what he did say is we could make, you could, the board could communicate a strong preference for that organization to be a boat spaces, but again, the, the language can't be changed to, to specify that. So, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, well, I, that provides information, so I, you know, we're here to review again the, uh, the, uh, request for the warrant article, um, uh, that would, um, shell the town, go to adopt provisions, and there's a thirty-six dash A, colon, four dash A, Roman rule one. The, the oil pressure Conservation Commission to expend funds for contributions to qualified organizations for the purchase of property interests for facilitating transactions or late pay-fee, where the property interest is to be held by a qualified organization, and the town will retain that interest in the property. So I know I had sent some information about conservation easements, it doesn't only apply to conservation easements, but this is one of the areas that it would apply, and I also, um, I, Bob Dawkins is here with boat spaces, who, um, can provide some additional information as well.
So Sandy, can I just, I was, sorry, I wasn't here last.
Right, yeah.
Um, so what does this help the Conservation Commission do that you can't do now?
Okay, um, well, uh, a couple of things, one is if a private property owner wanted to, um, sell an easement on his property, wants to kind of hold on to the property, but wants to protect it, and doesn't have the funds to, ability to donate it, um, the person could basically sell an easement. So the Conservation Commission, you know, can pu, purchase the easement, but then there's the responsibility for monitoring on a regular basis, so that would mean there'd be, that's kind of ongoing work for the Conservation Commission to monitor easements such as that. So, uh, you know, there are some situations now where boat open spaces is monitoring easements that were, are privately held property, that are in town, and that, um, you know, they can perform that function as part of their responsibilities. So there is a kind of a reduction in, in, you know, effort there, since the Conservation Commission has, you know, other things on its plate, um, as well. Um, if, if land is purchased, um, that money could also go toward a purchase, there could be situations where someone only wants, you know, another organization to own it, like boat open spaces, and boat open spaces doesn't have regular funding, and so, um, the Conservation Commission with the Conservation Fund could, uh, provide funding to boat open spaces for that.
Sandy, did this pass for the Conservation Commission to spend any money without permission from the slideboard?
For what?
Anything.
A number of things.
Could you, could you buy, could you give money away, or buy an easement without permission?
Well, um, I believe with this, um, of the. Okay, I think if there's, uh, if the town retains a property interest, it has to come before the select.
That's, I'm, I'm asking if, if this were to pass, and the Conservation Commission sought to give boat open spaces fifty thousand dollars to get an easement, could you do that without coming into some?
If, if the town didn't have, if it was pri, if it stayed private property, but had the easement on it that they held, yes.
So it would be possible if we were, if we were to, um, um, support this warrant article, if it passed, for the five hundred thousand dollars that's currently held in the, sorry?
Yeah, no, 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 that's a, go ahead.
Is there five hundred thousand dollars?
No, yeah, no, I mean, I wasn't laughing about that.
But is that right, is that number a lot?
It's, it's about right, it's a little more than that.
The five hundred thousand dollars could be used to, to purchase an interest in property for all by entity, it is not boat spaces, it would never come peacefully.
Yeah, a, as I understand, um, thirty-six A four A, one B, um, it's the only part of the, uh, statute under the, um, Conservation Commission statutes that prevents the Conservation Commission to expend funds without coming to the legislative body. And so, um, in the language that I understand, council already confirmed, we have to use a specific language in the statute, which doesn't limit it to boat open spaces, uh, to be any entity out there that's a nonprofit, because the, all the fine, uh, organizations, is just a nonprofit, I mean, that's what it is. Um, so that, that's my understanding.
Well, it's more than a nonprofit, that's be a qualified land trust.
It's a nonprofit, it's.
It has to be, it has to be a qualified land trust, and you have to, five oh one C three.
Correct.
Yeah.
I, I'm not prepared to make my motion on this recommendation, um, except that I had anything I think it should come as a citizen's question.
Can we discuss this further before we, guys?
I'm not, I'm just letting that go where I stand, so.
No, this remote, whatever you wanna add to the discussion, we're happy to have it, but you had to state your name again, to clear in the record.
Bob Dawkins, Boat and Spaces, forty-one South Bowl Road, so I'm the land conservation director of Boat and Spaces. Some of you weren't here last time, so I just wanna recap a couple of things, um, Boat and Spaces has been in the business for over twenty-five years, of owning conservation easements and managing easements. A lot of easements that we own are a town of, we have our stewardship director, Eric Toon, and Eric has years of experience overseeing easements into a stewardship with this committee. We have a strong board, uh, which is comprised of boat residents, we can own a few boat residents. Carrie Haddaway is our president, and as you guys know, also is only board chair. Um, we, we are, to be clear, we're a qualified land trust on internal revenue code, and we are a qualified shareholder organization under five oh one C three, and we're in good status with the IRS and the state of New Hampshire Attorney General's Office. We, to prevent duplication of roles, we're sort of the experts when it comes to. We, to prevent duplication of roles, we're sort of the experts when it comes to conservation easements and stewardship. And if the conservation commission, as Sandy said, has plenty on its plate and to take on a duplicate role of stewardship doesn't really make sense. And that's why the conservation commission members back in nineteen ninety-seven formed Boe open spaces. So there was a qualified organization to hold easements and manage those easements. The, the acquisition of easements, as Sandy alluded this to some break, it is usually part donation and part a discounted sale, because a lot of landowners can't just walk all, say, two million dollars about it. They need to get something for their family. And our partnership with conservation commission is critical because we're a member-funded organization and without access to the funds that the conservation commission has, we're really unable to acquire any easement unless we get an outright donation. And it's kind of, I can't go into any detail right now, but we are working on a couple of conservation easements. And one of them is a very significant property which has a lot of value for protecting watershed, um, in open space. So we would also, with the conservation commission's assistance, we would look for state and federal grant money. So if the conservation commission, for instance, gave us a hundred thousand dollars, we would look for a hundred thousand dollars in matching grant funds. And having the access to conservation commission's funds provides us with the ability to go out and apply for grants because unless we have funds ourselves, we can't get a grant, because all the grants require matching funds. So it's, it's so critical that we're able to, to work with conservation commission and be able to pass this, um, warrant article. And I, I guess I put out to you guys, is there some way that you can, with town council, have some kind of oversight in this process? So that, so that the conservation commission would only be able to expend funds to Boe spaces?
But you, you just said we can't do that.
Yeah.
Well, in the warrant article, but is there something in addition?
What, it sounds like we were going to change the R, we were the R S A, correct? Isn't that what?
We can't.
Right, all you can, it's just, what it's suggesting was however you could communicate a strong preference for that organization to be Boe spaces.
You can't stop.
But you can't.
So I, I have to be completely candid, uh, I had a quick shot to start with him. He said, hopefully, they can't spend it without, uh, conservation commission can't spend money without going to board. So that was kind of by Sandy Gray's. If we can have a checks and balances on how the land is up, you know, whatever the future board is here, could do that. But, um, the work, the work that your team, our, your group does, is amazing. Um, but there's got to be a way to do this without giving, you know, nearly half a million dollars of town revenue to someone who isn't pro-.
Well, I'm, i- in all honesty, I don't think the conservation commission is going to spend all its money in one place.
I don't, I don't know.
You know, uh.
Stranger things have happened, Sandy. I mean, you guys willing to, uh, I don't, you have bylaws, addend, addend your bylaws to give oversight to the board?
That would work. Well, so one of the suggestions I've read in, um.
I'm just throwing it out there, you know, we've heard so many things.
It's actually putting maybe a dollar with it, you know, because there.
You can't extend our, um, current use tax dollars without coming to the board for approval. It would be fine with me.
So there was a suggestion that some of the tribe read that the conservation commission adopted policy that they have to come to you before they would expend any funds under this clause. And we could set a diminus, a diminus amount so that if we're just looking to cover, say, twenty thousand dollars in transaction fees on some deal, then we don't have to come to you. But if we're looking to acquire an easement for a hundred thousand dollars, then we would have to come to you guys.
Because if they.
You have to be stronger than policy, because you could, you could have to new policy tomorrow that says we don't do that.
Can we get, um, recommendation from the town council as to how we can put a restriction on the conservation commission? So that assuming this passes, um, town, Boe, um, they would require a select board approval for expending funds. Personally, we're to.
Sandy, I'll give you a little heads up. I, I, I think February seventh is the, the last date for, uh, petition. So we're meeting after that. Uh, I think, or one more time before that? Can we meet one more time before that? Nope, we don't. We don't meet till the fourteenth. Um, so I'm trying to be fair to let you know that I don't want it to die if we happen to go another route. But I, I, I like this train of thought with a little bit of oversight. It scares, I, I, I know I don't, I didn't read the whole R S A, I don't. We're just adopting one section of it. It scares the daylights out of me that we give somebody from outside of Boe an opportunity to commit and manage, you know, a little, a third party to manage, manage our room. Why would we do that? I just.
Well, I mean, you, you sign an easement, that's a standard document that everybody, you know, that, that's, that's language that gets approved by an attorney. It's standard, uh, language that the state has. And the fact is, they're just going to be doing the monitoring. If, uh, if there was, um, a, a problem with, with what was going on and they weren't carrying on their responsibilities, there are, um, provisions for ensuring that that can be addressed.
And I know there's a concern of out of control, but we want you guys to understand that the land for an easement stays in ownership of the property owner. The property owner still retains all of their rights. They've just have given up the right to develop it.
So that, so that is the limit to what these dollars can be used for? Can it only be used for easements?
It's not.
No, I'm just saying.
But I, but I think it's important that people understand that. It's not that. If you had somebody who came to us today and said, I have a hundred acres in Boe and for five hundred thousand dollars, uh, conservation commission, I will sell it to you. And you say, great, we just passed this great ordinance, I, this nonprofit organization, qualified entity, um, is gonna, um, is gonna take title, because they could take title, right? Take title, yeah, but, but honestly, I would rather Boe spaces take title in some.
I don't want it to.
No, the thing is that you want to have, you know, I mean, you need to have an owner and you have the easement holder. That's the best way to have.
I'm sorry, I thought, I thought it could be, I thought it.
The town could be the.
Sure, it could be, it does, we don't have to just use all this money to buy easements. We could use it to protect land. We could just to buy.
Buy, right, right, right.
Possibly, so that I just don't want people to think this is just, oh, this is just easements and the, and the kind of, uh, the gracious person who sold us this easement at a, you know, discount is, is gets to keep the land. This could be some, all by nature, buying the land and, and using the town's money to do it.
Right, but there would be no reason for us to have somebody else buy the land. Because it would be more of the, who's going to hold the easement? I mean, the town might as well, if there's money going to purchase land, it might as well be the town purchasing your land.
Yes, that's what we've always done, but if we're going to purchase, the town's going to purchase the property and then give Boe spaces the easement. As Boe spaces, we don't want to own the property. We want to hold the easement and do the stewardship.
I understand that.
And, and to have, and to have a property easement, you have to have two different parties. You can't, you can't stewardship your own property.
See, my concern is, is that it's great with Sandy ending up the conservation commission and you, the work you guys do on Boe open spaces. But the way this is worded, you know, if, you know, Sandy says I'm going to move to Florida from now on, you know, we want a beach. We don't know who's coming next. This, this Christmas does leave it wide open. And Boe spaces isn't, isn't necessarily the one that, and it can be a land purchase, not just an easement.
It can be.
There's nothing that guarantees with this language that it's just conservation commission and Boe spaces. If it was, I'd, I'd say, hey, just keep it in town, everything's perfect. But that's a big open end thing that my only concern is, and there's going to be a way to solve it.
Yeah, this is.
I, I. That's all it is, because I, in my own experience, I've seen other out-of-state organizations come in and take advantage of towns on this type of thing.
Sandy, has there ever been a scenario where the conservation commission used some of these funds, uh, to assist in protection of?
In, in what?
Protection of the space, either easement.
In easement, yes, yeah.
So how would that, why do we need, why do we need?
Why, because actually the legislature clarified the language and the authority in two thousand eight. Because I think there was a lot of.
So since two thousand eight, we haven't used any conservation money to protect some land?
Well, not that you haven't bought.
Well. Would you take easements?
You guys bought it and then.
Oh, well, yeah, the thing is, yeah, well, well, we bought an easement and then gave it to Boe open spaces.
But that's a different scenario. The town took title to the easement and then transferred the easement to us after.
And then transferred it with the select boards.
Yes.
To do that. That works. You don't need it, you don't need a warrant article for that.
Because now you're getting in negotiations with our landowners that we're trying to do some of these confidentially.
What, you, but you're, you're doing it with our money. You're doing it with the town of Boe's money. And if you want to spend five hundred, you know, we have plenty of, um, uh, what do we call those meetings at the end of the night?
Non-public.
Non-public meetings for, for, for private issues, especially contract issues, that happen to preserve, you know, either things that don't happen or to preserve a deal. If you, if you're asking me, do you want to give car plows so we can spend this money without any oversight or not? I think you're hearing, at least from some of us, that we want oversight.
I understand that we have a possible pass without that oversight.
Okay.
So I'm asking you to go to town council, let's see if they can put some kind of wording of oversight and then.
Or, or how, how it can be.
We, I think we'd have to be separate from the warrant article.
Yes, yeah.
But I.
Yes.
I'm sure there's something we can do through council to, that restricts our conservation, because you have statutes, but municipalities can make the restrictions more strict than the statute. With respect to this exception, you have to use certain language. But meanwhile, town can make a, a regulation through the.
Should we have to deposit all of our, um, current use change tax into the conservation fund?
It's something that's voted on by the select board.
So we could always just.
I believe it was a town meeting.
Oh, town meeting, you're right, thank you.
Yes, and once a meeting says, put a hundred percent of your company's land change tax into the conservation fund, then that's where it goes. Is that every year? No, it's, it's a, once, once it's approved, it's that way until it's changed.
Okay, so potentially you just unwind it, put it into a revolving fund or something.
What was that?
Potentially just take the money, uh, out of the, if we go to Kabine, we say, let's stop putting the money into conservation fund, put it into some kind of revolving fund or something else.
I don't think we're here to do that.
Well, yeah, because what, what you are trying to accomplish. The bottom is, what you should hear is that at least some of us, and I think I'm counting to three, at least three of us are concerned that we don't want to support something that's going to take out the town's, uh, say, in these transactions. We can't do it in the wording of the warrant. So if that's off, next is limiting the ability of the conservation commission to expend any amount of money without our approval. So I, it's something.
Well, it's for purchasing.
This provision.
Well, they have, they have that restriction now under thirty-six, uh.
Well, there are certain things that we can spend money on without.
Right, but under thirty-six A four, your powers are at the discretion of the legislative body, so.
Right, yeah.
Under that statute, I believe, and David, can you just give Eric a call tomorrow and say, what language can we do? Because it's inherent in thirty-six A four.
Yeah, because when you look at thirty-six A four, I'm not sure why you guys don't have control, because.
We have the control until you do that other warrant.
Well, I know, but it doesn't make sense to me, because A, A four A adds pop, adds the powers of A one and B one. And for some reason, A one, you have to have the select board's approval and B one, you don't.
Correct.
Would that speak cause of the property?
Maybe if we know a state rep, they can pull that up.
What is a property interest in town?
Are you, you're saying we can take away that authority? Are you saying we could make, you make a motion to take away the authority or expend funds without permission?
I want to confirm with Eric, but it's my belief we can take away that authority, because the town inherently can, you know, you have state law, but we can make it more strict. The town's right to do that in a close situation.
I mean, you know, when I pay for monitoring?
No, it depends on the month, I don't know.
No, just with respect to anything you do under that paragraph.
Right, oh, oh, okay, okay. Well, I, I'm hearing different things.
I mean, you're already, you're already operating, I presume you're operating with respect to thirty-six A four legally. So if they vote on this warrant article, I just want to confirm through council that we can put a restriction solely with respect to your actions under the warrant.
Right.
With respect to that.
And just do that.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'd be all for that.
Okay, tell them, great.
So do you want to approve it if something can be done and subject to and?
I'd like to hear from council myself personally.
Well, there's no, but there's unfortunately no time.
Well, you can bring a citizen's warrant. My, my recommendation, my recommendation is to do that. My recommendation this afternoon was to do that. I think that will buy, you know, that doesn't mean we won't support it. Bringing a citizen's warrant article doesn't mean you won't get a recommendation of five oh from us. But I think asking, asking it to come from us without the adequate protection to ensure these money end up in a Boe entity is pretty much right.
But seven's the absolute difference.
Yeah, for the citizens.
Yes, no, for the citizens.
We can go later.
So how much later can you go?
Till the warrants, it needs to be posted.
Till the fourteenth, which is the date of your meeting?
Different thing.
Well, because you have a meeting on the fourteenth.
Right. And it has to be posted, yeah, the end of that week.
Okay.
Fourteenth of February. When's the time go?
I have no idea.
It could need one more time, the fourteenth.
Right.
I do, myself, I'll speak for the board. I would like to confirm my suspicions with Eric counsel.
I agree.
Anything else, anybody? Angela, Matt?
How do conservation commission members get appointed to the conservation commission?
I guess both, uh, they indicate an interest. I review what they've submitted and the select board approves them.
Like any other committee, yeah.
My point is, there is some oversight to make sure that the conservation commission members, that this board could trust that the conservation commission members would be acting in the best interest of the town.
Absolutely.
So.
I don't, I don't think there's a question, I don't, I don't, just to be clear about trusting, then what can I message? It's just what that looks like, you know, whether the best interest of the town looks like, Boe spaces owns it or some other entity that may have other political or social agendas own it is the problem.
Because there was an issue raised that, you know, if Sandy moves to Florida, can we trust the next person who fills Sandy's seat? And so I just want to make it clear that this board does decide who goes on the conservation commission. And so we do have that kind of, you know, we can be careful in who we appoint to the board and, uh, to the commission. So there's that aspect, that's all.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not quite there. The amount of work they all do, is, is amazing and what we've done in Boe, preserving thirty, I don't know.
No, it's not a third, not that high.
We have two thousand acres under easement.
I thought there was thirty-five hundred acres.
Well, there might be, yeah, there might be thirty-five hundred acres of conservation land, but that may, that includes private land that's under conservation too.
And he's talking just Boe spaces.
Right.
Right.
But there's not.
There's a lot more conservation land.
But it's still, it's not a third of the, it's not a third of the town. I'm just saying. It's, it's much less.
Well, you have town forest, which is all protected, because if I'm majority vote, you can do whatever you want with it. And then there's block ninety-seven, that fishing game has an easement on. I'm not sure all the town land is.
There's also by, there's an easement behind the high school that fishing game has an easement on.
Yeah. But I think that's about it. But I think that's about it.
So what, what percentage of town board you think is developed?
I think it's about twelve percent.
Is developed?
Oh, developed, no, I'm saying for, you know, conservation. And I, it may be not even permanently protected, I, I think your point is, you know, about town forests is, is a good one of those.
I just had one question, you're avoiding present Bo Open Spaces, and then Mr. Hope. Do I understand that on the fourteenth, you'll re, you'll consider this, um, and if there's oversight, it can be put on if it, uh, you, you know, you, you, you vote in that?
To put it as a warrant article, which the town will then vote on.
Right.
Right, that's what I'm hearing from.
You'll consider it on the fourth.
Most of us, I'm not speaking for everybody, but, um, that's what I'm hearing.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
But you'll consider taking a vote whether or not to support the warrant article on the fourteenth, right?
With, with the proper oversight, we can do it?
I think we can take it, we can consider taking the vote now, I, I don't.
We want to take it now.
Yeah, because.
At that point, is it, um, if we run into a situation where town council is unable to provide the wording that is satisfactory to the majority of this board, does that leave the Conservation Commission kind of out to dry on this warrant article if they don't gather the signatures for petition warrant article?
I encourage them to do that, I encourage them to do that and file it by the seventh, because if they get, if town council says you can't protect those funds, and we don't vote for it, they're, they're, they've lost the year. And so I think if.
Thank you.
I, I suspect they're going to tell us there's some path towards protecting funds. I, I think that given, uh, the authority, given the position, there is some way to do it.
Right.
Which is how we.
And if the Conservation Commission submits a petition warrant article by February seventh, this board would have to review that on the fourteenth before it, review it and approve it, or?
No, no. No, if it's received and it's, and they go out and.
Then it will petition warrant article, it wouldn't be a warrant article from this board.
Well, you get, you get to recommend it.
We can recommend it, you typically don't though.
Oh, no.
Unless it's the money, unless it's involved money, involved money, you have to.
Could we choose, if that were the case, could we choose to take a vote to recommend the petition warrant article?
I think we could adopt it as our own.
Or, or adopt it as a.
We could take a petition to it, and then they get it on motion.
See, it's not your own, you have to.
No, but.
Perhaps that gives you a way to be covered. One way or the other. With the support of this board.
Can you ask Eric to give a, a yes or no prior to the seventh?
Yes.
And I think it's also important to understand that this board has a long, a long tradition, that if a majority of this board votes for something, we speak as one. There are, there are times where I've spoken for an article at a board that I voted no for here, and that could have gone past that, so you will get a single position at town meeting for us.
Sandy, so I'm going to ask David to get an answer on Eric well before the seventh.
Okay.
And I, I would think, today's Tuesday, I would hope he could answer this in a yea or nay by Friday. So.
I don't.
That way, I think that's the quickest.
Kevin? Before we just move on, seven, we have five pine press drives, the only thing I'd like to bring up is, I'm assuming they would collect signatures on the RSA language?
Yes.
On the petition, so that, that will go to the town if the petition has enough signatures. And if, if it gets approved, then it will do exactly what you're concerned about.
But they're looking, but they're looking for another.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm suggesting that they get a citizen's warrant article in case if, if our lawyer says you can't protect those funds.